Good evening, everyone, and welcome to, what date is it? Oh, it's my sister-in-law's birthday, the June 10th, 2014 City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to invite up Pastor Marcy Miller from Samuel Lutheran Church to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us pray. Holy One, we give you thanks for this warmer season, for the beauty of your creation here in Michigan. We pray for farmers, that crops might be brought forth from the ground, and we pray for those who fight fires out west. We give thanks for teachers, for their love of children, and for their teaching throughout the year. We ask that you would keep our children safe this summer. We pray that we all might work together against violence in our community, in whatever ways we can use our talents. And we ask your blessing on this meeting, that all work may be done for the uplifting of this city. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Here we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rizza Pacifica?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Gowron?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sotaro?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have some honors and awards. Chief?
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Tonight, we're going to do the recognition of the Spring 2014 Citizens Academy graduates. And if you're a graduate, would you please look over and stand behind me? Okay, I'm gonna read the resolution here in a minute, and then Denny Powers will call off their names and they'll walk over, and they'll get this resolution from the Commission. But I want to say that, you know, these people standing behind me spent 10 weeks of their spring and early summer going to our Citizens Police Academy, and we really appreciate it. This is one of the largest classes we've ever had as far as participation. We're more than grateful that they took time out of their day voluntarily to come and work with us to see how their police department works, and all the surrounding jurisdictions that help us keep the city of Muskegon safe. And so let me read the resolution here. "Recognition of the Spring 2014 Citizens Academy Graduates. Whereas the City of Commission desires to provide citizens with a better understanding in the functions of law enforcement, dispelling the misconceptions and increasing positive communications between the citizens and police. And whereas it is desired that the City of Muskegon Commissioners to encourage cooperation to the public and law enforcement to positively impact our communities. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Muskegon City Commission hereby congratulates and recognizes, and will call their names off in just a minute, for their faithful attendance, completion, and graduation from the 10-week Spring 2014 Citizens Academy. Given on behalf of Muskegon City Commission on the 10th day of June 2014, and each of these resolutions is signed by our Honorable Mayor Stephen J. Gowron." Mayor, may I have you come to the center of the floor? And one more thing is, Denny Powers is, my committee lays on, it puts together many, many programs throughout the year. He's very pivotal in keeping our police department connected. We do a lot of things, obviously, in enforcement and all that stuff, but what keeps us grounded is all the committee work that we do, and Denny tirelessly works behind the scenes. But last month was awarded, I'm curious, he was awarded Employee of the Month. When you have 230 employees, that's pretty impressive that you get picked out, is your noted efforts of what you do for the city of Muskegon and all its residents. And I'm gonna turn over to Denny if you want to say something, and also resolutions.
I will. Okay, I'm gonna read the names. Before I do that, I just want to give you a little bit of background on the Citizens Academy. We've been doing this twice a year since 2002. And just so you know what it is, it's actually a 10-week class. They come for three hours, once a week, to a 10-week class. It takes them not through just Muskegon Police Department functions, but the entire criminal justice system. And our goal is to dispel any misconceptions out there and get good information out there. And we tell the guys up front and gals, that's not top-secret information, because we want them to go out there and share it. We want them to encourage other people to attend this as well. We take them through police department, of course, everybody likes the CSI detective work part stuff, but we take them to patrol functions, the Sheriff's Department, the jail, every woman's place, domestic violence, prosecution, juvenile court, everything you can think of in the entire system over 10 weeks. So they get a lot of information, three hours a night over a 10-week period. So if anybody's interested, we do that twice a year. We do it in the spring, we do another one in the fall. It'll start the last Wednesday in August. So in about another month, you'll see an advertisement come out about that in the paper and on the radio. It'll be on our website and on Facebook. So if you know of any that's interested, it's totally open. There are, other than the fact you can't have a felony conviction or something like that, we don't lock anybody out. There's no age limit. We get college students that want to go into criminal justice. We get senior citizens who just want to get more information. But it's a wonderful program, and I have to say, this class here, this is probably about a third of the class. We've got some people that can't make it, and that happens every time. But we graduated 16 people this time. But this was a wonderful class. They were very interested. I just have to say that. I mean, it seems like every session we go through, it gets better and better. But our officers love it, and I don't have one officer that comes and does this begrudgingly. They love it just as much as the students do, and they get a lot out of it as well, because they get the feedback back from the community. So without any further ado, Chief has already...
Mm-hmm. Oh, those, okay. Careful, because a couple of those are the diplomas then. Technical difficulties. There we go.
Okay, I'm gonna read the names. Actually, we're in the resolution. We kind of skipped over that part. But as your name's called, and I'm gonna call all 16 names, even though they're all not here, but when your name is called, if you'll go up and receive your resolution from the Chief and from the Mayor. Caleb Allen. Joseph Beal. Hayden Binder. Anthony Black. Martha Bottomley, I know she's here. Donald Correll. Jonathan Dorchak. Michaela Harmon-Wilson. Edgar Prelgouskas.
You don't hold my word.
Hey, I've been working at it.
Thank you.
Rory Stratton.
My very interesting plan.
And actually, I thought Rory would be here. He stopped in earlier. David Travis. The next one I also know is here. Byron Turnquist. He couldn't get away. Chardonnay Williams. Atiana Williams. Terry Zanizer. Thank you. And the last one is not here, but Brendan Zandy. Let's give them all a big hand.
And before we go further, I believe, Mr. Turnquist, do you have a comment or observation?
Thank you. I would just like to express our thanks for the job that our Public Safety Department does. A few years back, I think Commissioner German, and Hood, and myself went through the different departments, and we were all amazed at the loyalty and the dedication that our city employees have to our city. And that makes us strong. And it's the same way with our, both departments within the public safety. And just would like to thank Jeff for doing the program, and Denny Powers for putting it together. You know, he said about us coming and spending some time there, but the different people from the different departments, they were there at nine o'clock at night still talking to us. And it really made you feel well, because they not only are dedicated to their job, I'm afraid they live their job too, and they're proud to be doing their job. And we're very, very fortunate in Muskegon to have those type of people working for the city. So I just want to thank you, and one of the perks that we get towards the end of the season, end of our class, we get to ride with one of the police officers out on the street. And tomorrow, I'd be riding in the afternoon. I just want to warn you to watch your speed and buckle up.
Thank you, Commissioner. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the May 27th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Fireworks display permit for 5th of July celebration at Heritage Landing, City Clerk, summary request. Commission previously approved Night Magic's request for a fireworks display on July 4th. Night Magic is also requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for July 5th at Heritage Landing. Fire Marshal Metcalf has reviewed the request and recommends approval contingent on inspection of fireworks. Staff recommendation, approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks. City-County Human Resources Agreement, City Manager, summary request. The city currently contracts with Muskegon County for the provision of human resources services. This program is administered by the County Human Resources Department. The agreement is set to expire June 30th of 2014. City staff is requesting that the City Commission extend the agreement for one year to June 30th, 2015. All terms of the agreement would remain unchanged. Staff recommendation, to approve the one-year extension of the current agreement. Committee recommendation, the Civil Service Commission has recommended approval of the one-year extension. Bid award, cost sharing with Norton Shores and Fruitport Township, West Michigan Water Authority Engineering, summary request. Participate in the cost to construct piping to connect the new high-services pump that Norton Shores and Fruitport are proposing to the city's system, which would help the city eliminate the usage of the plant's high-service pumps during low-demand periods, and thus saving the city a lot more than the requested participation amount of $21,500. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to execute any necessary documents to participate in the cost of the piping at a rate of no more than 50% of actual cost. Consideration of bids, contract award replacement for roof at McGrath Park Building Engineering. Summary request, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Schmidt Roofing to replace the roof at McGrath Park Building, since they submitted the lowest quote of $15,274. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Schmidt Roofing to replace the roofing at the McGrath Park Building. Amendment to the fireworks ordinance, public safety, summary request. It is requested that the City Commission approve the ordinance amendment, which adds restrictions to the locations where fireworks may be used as allowed by state law. A provision was also added regarding sales to minors and the penalties set by state law. Fireworks may not be ignited, discharged, or used on public property, school property, church property, or the property of another person without permission. Staff recommendation, to approve the ordinance as presented. Appointment to the District Library Board, City Clerk, summary request. To approve the appointment of Clayton Hardiman to the District Library Board. Staff recommendation, approval of the appointment. Committee recommendation, the Community Relations Committee recommended the appointment of Clayton Hardiman at their June 9th meeting.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any other items that you wish to have removed for further discussion?
If not, I would move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any comments or discussion? Matt, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rizza Pacifica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sotaro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Area public hearings, please.
Transmitting of the 2014-2015 Proposed Budget, City Manager, summary request. At this time, staff is transmitting to the City Commission the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2014-2015, which starts July 1st of 2014. Both hard copy and electronic versions of the budget have been distributed to Commissioners. Additionally, the budget is available for public inspection on the city's website, at the City Clerk's office, or Hackley Public Library. The proposed budget will be reviewed in detail with staff at the June 9th work session. A public hearing on the budget will be held at the regular Commission meeting the following evening. City ordinance requires that the budget be adopted by the Commission on or before the second Commission meeting in June.
Thank you. Comments and additions, Mr. Manager?
Yes, so yesterday, we went over the full budget. We did the budget presentation, and there were a couple of concerns and a few items that we needed to tweak, mainly in the general fund. We originally proposed $24.7 million general fund revenues with $24.7 million in expenditures with just a small operating, I guess, surplus of $364. There were concerns about $495,000 in revenue that would have been generated from a streetlight special assessment, and then a community relations or community engagement position as well. So what we did was, we backed out the $495,000 in revenue related to the special assessment, and then we went ahead and eliminated it from the budget, the community engagement position. And then we also, I guess, from a revenue standpoint, we had some new information as of yesterday regarding revenue sharing, that indicates that we were receiving a little bit more, about $100,000 more than what we originally had budgeted. I propose to you guys, we went ahead and made that correction as well. And then we made some reductions in our contingency budget to go ahead and rebalance the budget without that $495,000 of revenue. So we can go forward and adopt still a balanced budget, even without that $495,000 of special assessment revenue, knowing though, going forward in the long term, that's still a gap that we need to fill at some point in future years. But we did balance it for this year. There are some items, most of those savings did come from the contingency fund, which is used if we have unexpected expenses, or if we have chargebacks, if we have big tax appeals that we lose. And so that safety net that was there will not be there at the same level it was, so we just need to be cognizant of that. There's a chance that maybe we lose a tax appeal or something, we might need to go back and readjust the budget and could put it back in a deficit position for the year. But we thought it was important as staff to still come back to you guys with a budget that was balanced. So what we're proposing now, all of the other funds will remain unchanged, but the general fund has just over $24.37 million in revenues, and $24.36 million in expenditures with a small surplus of $542. So we're able to maintain it essentially intact from yesterday, but we were able to also eliminate the couple of things that the Commission, at least a few members of the Commission objected to yesterday.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Are there any members of the public that would like to address the issue of the 2014-2015 If not, I would propose, or I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the 2014-2015 proposed budget as revised with the version dated June 10th, 2014.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to close the public hearing and accept the 2014-2015 proposed budget as amended as of today's date, 6/10/2014. Any discussion or comments?
I'll refer to the manager.
If I could, I said, we made these changes, but I did want to make sure I pointed out that all I did was direct some people to make changes, and Derek in particular worked very hard all day today to make sure you guys had complete updated budget booklet. So I want to make sure that did go acknowledged. I did appreciate all the work you did on it. And I also wanted to acknowledge staff that was here yesterday, especially Mohammed gave some great input into the budget development and helped, I think, as we went forward and given me some advice this morning in how we would bring the budget back to you guys adopted. So I want to make sure that I did acknowledge both Mo and Derek and the rest of the division heads for the input they gave and the hard work that they put on it, especially pulling it together today after we made the changes from yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you for continuing to impress upon all of us the importance of a tight and cooperative and talented team that continues to work so hard for the benefit of all of us citizens, all of us neighbors of Muskegon. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'd just like to start by also thanking staff. I know this is difficult, and in many respects, you're squaring the circle. Our revenue just has not increased at all. In fact, it's been a long, hard fight to try to maintain adequate services for the people who live in this community, even with a marginally increase in the state revenue sharing that's been proposed, and it's still not, you know, signed by the governor yet. It's still half of what the governor proposed in his original budget. And we're still down about $1.4 million a year in revenue sharing from where we were just a few years ago. And a lot of the decisions that we've had to make, as far as staffing levels, what people get paid, the kind of services that we're able to provide, have had to be cut or changed or reduced because of that reality. Our local tax base, with the loss of the Sappy Plant and the continued decline in the value of the Consumers Energy Power Plant, you know, it's not been able to overcome those cuts from the state. So I really appreciate the staff who are here today and their predecessors for ensuring that our bills are paid, our people's pensions are covered, their health care is covered, and that we're providing, I'll be honest, adequate service. I'd like to be able to provide excellent service, but I think we've been able to do that. And I do think as we go forward, and there's already been discussion about asking the citizens to look at a dedicated street village, that we've got to go beyond adequate. If we're gonna grow this community, if we're going to bring new businesses in, if we're going to be successful in creating those jobs that people are looking for, and making this an attractive place for people, then we have to take care of the basics. And we get virtually no money from the state for local streets. And we have to do something. We have to take care of our streets. And we're either gonna pay by having increased car repairs, and I've already had an increased car repair because I've hit a pothole this winter, or we can all chip in together and have streets that are increasing the value of our homes, that are easy to drive on, and are a benefit to this community. And when we bring in prospects who might be interested in bringing jobs to Muskegon, they can look around and say, this is a community that's got to act together, and I want to invest here. So again, thank you. I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I really think we can't emphasize enough the years of hard decisions and the reductions and the leanness of this city as we operate today. I think we're very efficient and very well-run, and I want to thank the manager and the staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any others? If not, may we have the roll call?
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sotaro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizza Pacifica?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other business to bring forward? If not, we'll move on to public participation. Ms. Bertha Williams, Always Sunny Cupcakes. Yes, if I could have you approach the podium, please give your name and address. We'll give you the opportunity to address the Commission. When you see me going like this, you're one minute away from your cutoff point, but I believe you're here to speak about particular fees and issues regarding the new downtown community kitchen, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go right ahead.
First of all, my name is Bertha Williams. My address is 1813 Duchess Court, and I'm from Always Sunny Cupcakes. I am Muskegon's very first mobile cupcake unit. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to have to speak to you all on today. My question is, is that Muskegon now has like a new downtown renovation area, and there is going to be like a community kitchen. It states plainly on the mobile food vending application that brick-and-mortar restaurants located in the city of Muskegon targeted downtown development area, there's a certain fee, there are different criterias. My question tonight is, is I would like to know if the downtown community kitchen is considered as a part of the downtown development area?
How are you interpreting that?
The kitchen is located in the DDA.
Correct.
Yeah.
So would a person that has an address that would be at the downtown community kitchen, would those fees apply for that individual as well?
Do you want me to respond?
Right, I, but the question is, I need some type of help here with, you know, interpreting the question and the staff response.
Should I, should I read?
Or... I was gonna say, I think I'm picking up where you're going with it.
Okay.
I would say this, we set a lower fee for brick-and-mortar restaurants in the downtown area because they were paying property taxes, and we wanted them to have a...
Yes.
We didn't want the food vehicles to have a competitive advantage over our property tax-paying brick-and-mortar.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think the intention was that people that used the kitchen would get that same benefit of the lower fee, because it was really designed to assist them, to make it more competitive for the property tax-paying brick-and-mortar business owning people, not the people that are renting space at the farmer's market necessarily. So we wanted a $300 fee for the people who aren't paying property taxes downtown, essentially, and a lower fee for the ones that already were paying and were just looking to expand their business out to the street.
All right, as being a mobile unit in the Muskegon area for over four years, I certainly pay taxes in the city of Muskegon and in the state of Michigan. I think that it should be also permissible for a person that, in order for downtown to develop, you have to give some type of incentive for those that are also trying to grow a business. So I'm wondering if that particular fee could be reevaluated and looked at again?
What we'll be going through, this will be our first year for our allowing mobile food vendors
Yes.
on the streets. So it's a work in progress.
Mm-hmm.
But at this fine, at this time, we've defined brick-and-mortar as those institutions that are, you know, on the street fronts, you know, within the downtown area.
So...
Mobile is mobile.
Right? So that would not include like the community kitchen as being a brick-and-mortar building?
So...
Well, I think the issue is if the, if the community kitchen is the same as somebody who owns their business that's either in a building space that they lease for their business, which in most cases, we're talking restaurants here, or they own their building, the community kitchen is not intended to serve as a substitute for that, for the purposes of the mobile vending fees. The intent behind the community kitchen is to avoid having to come up with the capital necessary to install a commercially licensed kitchen in order to produce products and goods for people who are starting out in the food service business. So that was the intent behind there. So what, and as the mayor's already said, this is a work in progress. We're gonna be looking at this on a regular basis to see how it can be done better. But the intent was to hold harmless, you know, the places that are already down there now, the Curry kitchens, and the Meen Graces, and the 31 barbecues, and those kind of places that have invested in the downtown and... that have invested in the downtown and have that added expense and are paying property taxes for their space, either directly because they own the building or through their leases, and while at the same time giving the opportunity for new entrants to test the market out with mobile vending. So, I mean, I hope that cleared, I mean, are we all on the same page? Am I understanding you correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure, because I thought that's where you were going with that. And no, the community kitchen was not intended to serve as the brick-and-mortar home for the purposes of the fee structure for the mobile vendors.
And it's very much an extension of and the intent of the operation of the farmer's market.
Awesome. One more question, if I may. When it comes to the community kitchen, I would hope that there would be an opportunity for the using of the mobile kitchen to actually participate in the farmer's market, because I'm finding that it's somewhat of many hurdles to jump to actually become a part of the farmer's market. And hopefully, that has been resolved. In the last couple of days, I heard that there was some type of resolution, but I'm finding it very hard as an upcoming entrepreneur and a citizen of Muskegon County to actually become a part of the farmer's market. So could there be like maybe some clarity in the guidelines on how to actually become a part of that, or could there be like not just one person making that decision?
The operations in the market are an administrative process as opposed to a political process. So those determinations, that development will be, you know, of course, evaluated and reevaluated, and staff will continue to, you know, look at things as they grow and change. Commissioner?
What exactly are you having problems with when you say you're having problems becoming a part of the farmer's market?
Well, what happened is, is that because I'm a full-service bakery, I just, I travel doing it. I found that because there were more than like three or four bakeries that the headmaster of the market thought that there shouldn't be more than a certain amount of people at that market that sell baked goods. And I was told that there was a certain piece of the pie, and the pie had been taken. And I found that to be quite offensive, because, I mean, how can the city actually grow if there's like, doors are being closed for individuals that want to actually be a part of, you know, like the downtown renovation?
Right. At this point, as brought up by the city managers just now, these concerns and the experience are being taken under consideration, and staff will be working on and answering and report out back to the commission.
Yeah, I would just point out, I mean, there are guidelines the market master uses. They have been distributed, so, you know, I know we all have a lot of stuff stored in the back of our minds, but they do cap the number of non-farm enterprises at the market because of limitations regarding space. And I believe that they have three slots for bakeries, three or four, and there's three or four slots for like meat and cheese and fish and those other kinds of non... So, I mean, those are things that, I mean, that are there, and maybe there needs to be a discussion administratively as to how best to go about that. But that's not something that's arbitrary. That's something that's been in the farmer's market guidelines for quite a while.
Decades.
Yeah. So, I mean, it may be worth revisiting, and certainly the managers heard that, but I just wanted to emphasize, this isn't something where the market master makes that up. There are guidelines that they're expected to follow.
And I think, did we work it out with you today and told you that you'd be allowed there?
I believe so, sir, but I said that I would come to this meeting, and I wanted to voice that so others could get that information as well.
Okay, very good.
I thank you so much for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ruthie Walker?
If we could just have your name and address, and I believe we have an issue with a tree.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Ruthie Walker, 953 West Hackley Avenue, Muskegon 49441. I purchased this house in December 1972. I moved away from Muskegon in 1984, and I moved back in 2008. My problem is I've called City Forestry, and I also have a booklet. This is your city of Muskegon.
Right.
And it states in here that when you have a problem with trees, it's nothing anyone can do, it's between the property owners. I don't understand that. But Muskegon got so many trees and stuff, and it's falling on property and damaging property. It just seems foolishly that there's nothing on the books to force someone to cut a tree down. This tree is standing three to four stories tall. Last fall, one of the limbs fell off and buried amidst my house. Now, the tree appears to be dead, and when the wind blows, it sways, and I'm afraid the tree is going to fall on my house, and if it falls, it's going to fall directly on my bedroom, and it's going to kill me. I went to my insurance company, and they stated that there's nothing can be done because of the city ordinance about trees, that if the tree do fall on the house, then I would have to pay my deductible, and then they would repair it, and then in turn, it would go to the owner of the house to seek damages. I feel none of this is necessary. Why should thousands of dollars be paid out after the damage has been done if it can be stopped before it even happens? So this is why I'm here, because I've called everyone I can think of, and no one can give me any help. And I don't want my house torn down by a tree. I say I came back here for retirement, and I want to live in peace. And every time it rains, the wind come up, I'm living in fear that this tree is going to fall on my property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor.
I understand exactly how you feel. My next-door neighbor has a very large dead white pine in their backyard, and there were branches that fell this past winter that did damage to the driveways. So I just want to put that out there, because, you know, we always get accused of self-interest. I don't want anybody to think I'm hiding anything. But if there is an ordinance tweak that can be done on something like this, if it's something that if the insurance carriers had certain language in the city ordinance where they could go in, you know, it might be worth taking a look at. I know the two of us are not alone in that situation where there's a neighbor with, maybe because they don't have the resources, or maybe they just don't care, but they have a very large hazardous tree that's dead in their yard, and we all know when the wind blows, they fall over. And as we saw, a number of houses were severely damaged or destroyed this spring. So I certainly think these are legitimate concerns, and if there's something that can be done to at least provide some tools there for adjacent property owners, that might be at least worth looking into.
Did I see you after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to the commission? If not, take her away, Commissioner Hood.
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Rizavasivika to adjourn. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Well, I guess we're out of here. Thank you.
[inaudible][1732.91]